The mayor has asked us to start the meeting on time. He's running a few minutes late. Oh, never mind.
I don't have to do it.
All right, Madam Clerk, the time is 6:37 in the evening. Please call the roll.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. Yes, Councilmember Cuadra Garcia. Councilmember Hersberg.
Present.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moreira.
Present.
Mayor Diegus.
Here.
Mayor, you have the quorum.
Excellent. Per the agenda, we're going to continue on straight into public comments. But actually, why don't you all do me a favor and please stand while we do the pledge of allegiance?
I'll lead it today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Councilman Hersberg, would you please lead us in a moment of silence slash prayer?
Thank you. Please bow your heads and we just thank God and ask him to allow us to communicate and think well and make proper decisions. And thank you for the community for joining us.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, so this is a workshop, so there aren't necessarily any strict time limits. At least I don't plan to impose any when it comes to your ability to speak. But I would ask you to please be mindful of the time of our other fellow members of the public that are here and, you know, the fact that they also may have other things that they have to get to. So just be mindful about that. But other than that, I'll leave the floor up to you to speak for as much time as you may like. So with that, let's go ahead and start it. Madam Clerk, I don't know if you want to read the rules into the record just, you know, and for those that aren't as familiar with speaking in public. Thank you.
Yes, good evening and welcome to the workshop. And as Mayor Diegus stated, if you are here and you want to provide public comments, please just approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We are not going to time. And usually, it's like three minutes where we afford each speaker. But again, as he mentioned, we're not timing you. If you're at home as well, you can unmute yourself. And as always, we're available via Zoom, so you can provide, you can participate even if you're not here. And the only thing we always stress without reading, I don't have the agenda with me, but I'm speaking from the knowledge of many years, is to be respectful. You don't clap, you don't make any noises. We're all residents, we're friends, we're in a community, and we're here to gather your input and for them to make decisions that are wisely for the benefit of the community. So again, please feel free to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. And let us have a good meeting.
Excellent. Come on up.
Alex Ariano, Lakeland Allen. Okay, the board that used to exist changed the guards from Level 1 to Level 2. Okay, we would like to get it back to Level 1. There's no reason for Level 2 guards if they're only taking tags and everything else. Okay, that's number 1. Number 2, I just happened to notice the other day a sign on the corner of Perimeter Road and 154th saying that bicycles can have the entire lane if they want to. That's totally against what I learned when I was growing up in the manual that taught us how to ride a bike. Okay, I have seen people ride three abreast totally blocking the entire lane. And that you have to go behind them until they finally veer off. I don't think that's right. They should be in single file like we used to do in the old days. Okay, and that's about it. Thank you.
Where was that sign? Did it ever take?
Okay, it's on the west side on Perimeter Road, just before you get to 154th.
So heading down toward the fire station?
Correct. You pass the fire station, it's there.
Is it Palmetto Frontage Road?
Huh?
Palmetto Frontage Road, the one where the dog park is, just all the way?
I have no idea where the dog park is. I don't own a dog.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so that's probably where he's talking about. Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I've seen those signs around all over town. Honestly, I don't know. If we put it or the county puts it, you'll definitely see them outside our limits too a bit.
But is it as part of like the share rows or whatever they're called?
Okay. The sign says bikes may use full.
Got it. Okay, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
Esperanza Reynolds, Lakeland Allen. I am not sure even as to what to say because there was no preparation for this meeting, no documentation shared with us, no budget for us to be prepared. And while I appear to be very intelligent, I cannot just sit, stare at a document and come up with brilliant questions. I have no idea what to say. I thank you for the prayer and communications because that was really superb. But just by looking at this list here, it looks as if we, or they're suggesting to charge us 10 less dollars rather than 340, 330. That was the first thing that caught my eye. And the truth of the matter is that the original ordinance promised that we would only pay 208. And little by little, through the advisory board, they kept on increasing this and increasing that, and the charge for this and the charge for that and the charge for JP and the charge for whatever. And it's come to a point at which we're paying 340. And to try to reduce and get us back to where we should be should be a number one concern. So I will read this, and I'm sure the next time that we meet, I'll be more prepared.
Thank you. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, JP, I think, Melissa, I think part of the purpose for this is in advance of preparing the budgets before they come before the council is to get public input on what you would like to see. So I think what Melissa and JP will do from this is, for example, like when Alex was saying, I actually would like to see us go back to Level 1 as opposed to Level 2 on the security guards, that's something that they will factor in as a possibility when they present options to the council later this year. That's just my guess on it. And that's probably why there isn't as much supporting material yet for each of the districts. Although I do see here, for example, all sorts of petitions that I guess Pat diligently collected on some improvements that his community would like to see as part of their separate district. So something again for staff to look into. And I see Melissa has her hand up.
Yes, if I may. So what's presented here is a preliminary budget. It is not something that even when this is presented to the council in May on first reading-
The mayor has asked us to start the meeting on time. He's running a few minutes late. Oh, never mind.
I don't have to do it.
All right, Madam Clerk, the time is 6:37 in the evening. Please call the roll.
Good evening, oh, good evening. Yes, Councilmember Cuadra Garcia. Councilmember Hersberg.
Present.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moreira.
Present.
Mayor Diegus.
Here.
Mayor, you have the quorum.
Excellent. We're going to, per the agenda, we're going to continue on straight into public comments. But actually, why don't you all do me a favor and please stand while we do the pledge of allegiance.
I'll lead it today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, Councilman Hersberg. Would you please lead us in a moment of silence slash prayer?
Thank you. Please bow your heads and just thank God and ask him to allow us to communicate and think well and make proper decisions. And thank you for the community for joining us.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, so this is a workshop, so there aren't necessarily any strict time limits. At least I don't plan to impose any when it comes to your ability to speak. But I would ask you to please be mindful of the time of our other fellow members of the public that are here and, you know, the fact that they also may have other things that they have to get to. So just be mindful about that. But other than that, I'll leave the floor up to you to speak for as much time as you may like. So with that, let's go ahead and start it. Madam Clerk, I don't know if you want to read the rules into the record, just, you know, and for those that aren't as familiar with speaking in public. Thank you.
Yes, good evening and welcome to the workshop. And as Mayor Diegus stated, if you are here and you want to provide public comments, please just approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We are not going to time. And usually it's like three minutes what we afford each speaker. But again, as he mentioned, we're not timing you. If you're at home as well, you can unmute yourself. And as always, we're available via Zoom, so you can provide, you can participate even if you're not here. And the only thing we always stress without reading, I don't have the agenda with me, but I'm speaking from the knowledge of many years, is to be respectful. You don't clap, you don't make any noises. We're all residents, we're friends, we're in a community, and we're here to gather your input and for them to make decisions that are wisely for the benefit of the community. So again, please feel free to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. And let us have a good meeting.
Excellent, come on up.
Alex Ariano, Lakeland Allen. Okay. The board that used to exist changed the guards from level one to level two. Okay, we would like to get it back to level one. There's no reason for level two guards if they're only taking tags and everything else. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I just happened to notice the other day a sign on the corner of Perimeter Road and 154th saying that bicycles can have the entire lane if they want to. That's totally against what I learned when I was growing up in the manual that taught us how to ride a bike. Okay? I have seen people ride three abreast, totally blocking the entire lane. And that you have to go behind them until they finally veer off. I don't think that's right. They should be in single file like that we used to do in the old days. Okay? And that's about it. Thank you.
Where was that sign, did it take?
Okay, it's on the west side on Perimeter Road, just before you get to 154th.
So heading down toward the fire station?
Correct. You pass the fire station, it's there.
Is it Palmetto Frontage Road?
Huh?
Palmetto Frontage Road, the one where the dog park is, just all the way?
I have no idea where the dog park is, I don't own a dog.
Okay, got it. Yeah, so that's probably where he's talking about. Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I see those signs around all over town. Honestly, I don't know. If we put it or the county puts it, you'll definitely see them outside our limits too a bit.
But is it as part of like the share rows or whatever they're called? Okay, yeah. Got it, okay, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
Esperanza Reynolds, Lakeland Allen. I am not sure even as to what to say because there was no preparation for this meeting, no documentation shared with us, no budget for us to be prepared. And while I appear to be very intelligent, I cannot just sit, stare at a document and come up with brilliant questions. I have no idea what to say. I thank you for the prayer and communications because that was really superb. But just by looking at the, this list here, it looks as if we, or they're suggesting to charge us 10 less dollars rather than 340, 330. That was the first thing that caught my eye. And the truth of the matter is that the original ordinance promised that we would only pay 208. And little by little, through the advisory board, they kept on increasing this and increasing that, and the charge for this and the charge for that and the charge for JP and the charge for whatever. And it's come to a point at which we're paying 340. And to try to reduce and get us back to where we should be should be a number one concern. So I will read this, and I'm sure the next time that we meet, I'll be more prepared.
Thank you. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, JP, I think, Melissa, I think part of the purpose for this is in advance of preparing the budgets before they come before the council is to get public input on what you would like to see. So I think what Melissa and JP will do from this is, for example, like when Alex was saying, I actually would like to see us go back to level one as opposed to level two on the security guards, that's something that they will factor in as a possibility when they present options to the council later this year. That's just my guess on it. And that's probably why there isn't as much supporting material yet for each of the districts. Although I do see here, for example, all sorts of petitions that I guess Pat diligently collected on some improvements that his community would like to see as part of their separate district. So something again for staff to look into. And I see Melissa has her hand up.
Yes, if I may. So what's presented here is a preliminary budget. It is not something that even when this is presented to the council in May on first reading, we will have two readings, it is only to really approve the assessment. The preliminary budget of it is put together to kind of give an idea to the council as to whether or not the assessment rate would need to increase or be reduced. But the budget itself for the special taxing district would be approved in September with the entire budget of the town. Essentially, what will go before council in May and then second reading in June is to approve the assessment rate so that it gives me the authority to send that to the county because they need that information by July 11th or 10th so that they can implement that into the TRIM.
Okay. No, but it's just that whenever we went to the meetings that the advisory boards would have, there was always a review of all of the details. Like, for example, what are the post, whatever it is that they are, you know, the guards are told to do? What are the crime statistics or concerns of SFM? You know, there was a lot of conversations that we, you know, no longer have. So in preparation for this, I literally looked to see if there was something in the background already posted on the website that I could understand what if we were going to discuss, but there was nothing. And this, we just got a few minutes ago.
Okay, I see JP has his hand up. But also I just wanted to ask you, do you recall when those meetings with the then advisory board would take place roughly? Was it around this time or a little later?
It was every single month.
No, no, but I mean, when they would start discussing the budget.
When they were starting the budget, right, it was like maybe, I don't know, around this time more or less. Right, but the package was always available.
Okay.
Do you remember it was this?
I'll turn it over to JP now.
Did you receive the postcard in the mail?
Yes.
In the postcard, it has a topics of discussion, and it tells you exactly what's going to be discussed.
Right, but there's no background as to what to look at. Because I know when you say you're going to discuss the budget, I understand that. But, you know, I need to see the numbers. You follow? Yes, sounds good?
Okay, yeah, if anything, you know, the notes, again, there's a newer process that we're trying out now that we've, you know, we're in essence in a pilot program without the NSD boards. So, but good to know, and thank you for your feedback.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Oh, and Melissa, our budget director, go ahead.
Again, this is a workshop. What will be presented in May to the council will be online a week before they even discuss it. So that, what will be presented in May, which will be published to our website a week before they meet at the regular council meeting, is where they will make a decision. There is no decisions being made here today. This is just a workshop, just to make sure that's clear for the record.
Thank you. Boris, come on down, name and address though, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Boris Foster, 15221 Manteeth Place. I just got the budget, but I have two comments. And for what the budget I saw, it's exactly what I was going to speak about. The, it looks like the LPR cameras have been removed. I remember last year, there was, at the very end, the LPR cameras were charged to the districts, and that was going to be removed from the districts to the townwide because it was a townwide network. So I see that's so fantastic. The second, just my second and last point, is that the section one, there, I guess, the management, administrative cost has gone up dressed, compared, in fact, I don't have it for this, I just got this, but I was just looking at it from the prior years. We went from, and this is not, I don't want anyone's to go up. Royal Oaks East went from 48,193 down to, last year, I believe, 38,726. Royal Oaks Section One, 48,968 to 40,526. Lockloman from 40,243 to 27,716. Fantastic. You know, the problem was, section one went from 25,703 in 2022, 23, to 43,177. That's a 68% increase when everyone else went down, you know, by 19%, 17%. Lockloman went down by 31%. And I'm just, I know Royal Oaks East and Section One both have two gates. Lockloman, I think, has a roving patrol. I just am hopeful that this year, our costs can go down. And I mean, it's risen, like I said, about 68% in the last two years. Everyone else has gone down. So that would be, that's my other.
Thank you. And do you have any thoughts on the level of the guard gate, since you live in section one, as far as one or two? Currently it's at two, so would you say keep the same? Or would you also be in favor of going back to level one? I mean, if you want to think about it, obviously, I'm putting you on the spot, you know, right? And like you said, just.
Because I like the guards, I really like the guards. You know, I know, I know what the guards are supposed to do. They're supposed to take the tags. And I think, do you need a level two to pay the extra money for that? But I do like the guards. I mean, you know, the guards see me coming, they know me now, they open the gate. You know, and I, like I'm home. You know, they see me, I don't pull out the card, they open the gate for me. I love that. So, but.
Well, again, if anything, just think about it because you're right. We do need to get more information out to the public. So once you get that, perhaps, you know, we can speak some more separately about that. Fair?
Absolutely. But yeah, that's, yeah, those otherwise fantastic guys, I really appreciate you doing this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't know if staff wants to address his concerns on the administrative fee?
As far as the administrative indirect and direct costs, the direct cost is based on the liaison for the NSDs. And right now, that is based on the actual salary that they receive. So if they receive a COLA, it'll essentially go up. So every year, if they receive a COLA, the amount will go up as well. As far as the indirect cost, it has been done where we have taken all of the total number of units for each district and divided it up to a percentage of what each district would have. So your, one district may have 800 units, another district will have 10 units. So it's been divided up where it's a percentage amongst all the districts together. And that's how that was calculated to be able to come up with the percentage. And the percentage for, the percentage for it is the 4.5%, which in reality, what the town uses as an overhead rate for any other thing within the town is at about a 12%, maybe a 13%. It hasn't been calculated yet for the coming fiscal year. But the NSDs, in order to keep your costs down, the town manager has decided to keep it just at 4.5. I'm lying. The previous council had agreed to make it at 4.5% for the NSDs so that they wouldn't have to incur more expenses. But the indirect cost is essentially processing the invoices for the guard services to our finance department, having legal, address any issues that you may be having within your district, going out to bid with our procurement office for a new contract, maybe even for the guard, et cetera, et cetera. So the indirect cost takes into account all those, even myself, I don't work on your stuff every single day. So that's why there's a direct and an indirect cost. I am not sure if I've answered your question, but if there's another question regarding that, I'm more than happy to address it.
Yeah, I have a question. Melissa, the part of that I think is not well understood up here on the dais and possibly down there in the audience. It's, how did we go from 6,610 in actuals in 2022, 2023 for the direct costs to 31,601? My math sucks, but I'm pretty sure it's a $25,000 increase from one year to the next. What did the residents gain?
That goes back to the formula that was then created with the previous council of using the total number of units for each district. So if you look at Lockloman's, theirs went down significantly, or it should have gone down significantly. Oh, the 31,000. Let me look at that, if you give me a moment, please.
I mean, I'm looking at Lockloman's. It went up from 6,610 to 7,293, which is a reasonable increase. Royal Oaks Section One went from 13,000 to 21,000, which is pretty steep, but still not as bad as Section One. Similar with Royal Oaks East. And then we'll jump into. Lake Patricia went up by 1,700. And 2,600 for Lake Hilda.
Boris, she recognized in the meantime while staff gets.
Yeah, while she does that.
Yeah, because, yeah, this was troubling to us last year. And I think when Dade County had us, when the town, until last year, it was a percentage, and it was 10%, whatever the total budget was, they just added 10%. And then last year, I believe they said, the formula being used was how many people were served by the gate, when it's really just the gate. I mean, it doesn't matter how many, I mean, you know, the others have two gates, we only have one gate. The others have roving patrol. So you, so they said, we have the largest community behind, there are seven HOAs behind the gate. So we just had, our fees just shot up. We have the lowest budget because ours is the simplest gate. It's one gate, others have two gates, roving patrols. So although it seems like there's much less administrative, you know, time spent on our section one because it's just a simpler one gate, that formula of how many people are served, 843 versus like they said Lockloman, I don't want anyone's to go up. I'm not saying go back to the 10%, whatever. But so it's 843, and then our rates go way up. So that's what I understood it to be, why ours went up by 68%.
And now it makes sense, which I don't know if the previous council really thought about it, thought it through. I think what Mr. Foster is saying is that because of the amount of units that they have behind that gate, that's how they're being, that's how they're calculating what they're being charged. And it does make sense what he's saying because if they only have one gate where each district in Royal Oaks has two gates, it makes sense that there's going to be more work to manage those two gates than one gate, even if there's three times the amount of residents. You know how many residents there are behind section one?
So section one has 841 units.
Yes, compared to Lockloman, which has.
188.
Yes, so that's why.
So that's why there's this higher because they're the district with the most units. There is this 39% of all of the security guard districts. Where Lockloman is 9%, Royal Oaks East is 25%, and Royal Oaks Section One is 27% for last fiscal year.
So the change was purely because you changed the formula?
Yes.
It wasn't, there wasn't a change in cost, it was just the formula was changed.
Yes, based on the number, the total number of units for each district.
Okay.
Every year, this is a contentious topic when it comes to the.
That cost, right.
Special tax, I'm trying to remember not saying NSDs, but saying special taxing districts since we've changed that once again, where it's always questioned how we come up with the indirect and direct costs. And in our previous council, this is the formula that we sat with, with two of our council members to discuss, and this is what was approved then moving forward, so.
I just want to make an observation. I see the budget carryforward line item went from 3,000, in the same time period from which the direct cost increased from 6,000 to 31,000. The budget carryforward also increased pretty much by an almost identical amount, if not the same, 3,449 to 26,340. Is it possible that we're just over budgeting this item?
Keep in mind that part of that carryforward is actually a contingency. So if you look under, not under actuals because contingency reserve is never an actual, you would have to move the money out to another expense line item to be able to utilize it. So you'll never have a dollar amount under a contingency line item as an actual. But for budget, if you notice, under the adopted budget, there's 26,000. So part of that 48 that's carried over, you have to discount then the 26 because that is just a reserve. And that's per the ordinance, to maintain a reserve.
Sure, but that's looking at the 24, 25 adopted. I'm looking at the change from 22, 23 actuals to 23, 24 actuals. We had an increase in direct costs from 6,610 to 31,601. At the same time, we had an increase in budget carryforward from 3,449 to 26,340.
Okay.
Would not stand to reason.
I can answer that. If you look at the 2021 actuals, as a matter of fact, can I just present this whole budget just?
Yeah, so go ahead, why don't we go that route?
So if you have the sheet up in front of you, we're going to go over Miami Lake Section One. And we have our account number, our account, there's three years of actuals, our current budget, our current budget amended, and what is the projection for the year end? And then what is the preliminary budget to be able to make a decision on what the assessment rate should be for this district? Now, underneath Miami Lake Section One, you have the number of units, you have the assessment rate per unit, you have the total guard hours, holiday hours, and what the cost is for the guard and the holiday hour for the guard. To answer your question, Councilman, if you see, in '22, it was $15.50, and then when you move to '22, '23, it's $22.10. We had to probably at that time eat up the contingency to then be able to fund the security guard. Are you following? You're not following me. Okay. So when you go from, you see how you have a budget carryforward of 83,000, and then in the following year, it's at 3, the cost for our security guard went up. It went from $15.50 an hour to $22.10. So in order to make up for that increase, we ate away at the contingency reserve, and we then also increased the assessment rate to be able to supplant then again the contingency reserve and make up for the increase in the following year.
He follows now.
Yes. You can see then what the assessment rate is for the total that we would receive for the assessment rate based on 841 units at $330 for the preliminary budget. And then we take a 5% adjustment for anybody that pays early or they get a discount. We have $500 in transponders. And then again, the budget carryforward, it's a projected carryforward, which you can see at the bottom of the year-end projection of that line right next to it. Then we have the direct and indirect costs, which I think I've kind of touched on a little bit already. And then all of our operating costs. There's no capital cost at this moment. And then the total budget of 300, oh, a 10% contingency of 28,528. And then the total budget of 312,125 that's being presented preliminarily for the following year. This preliminary budget includes a $10 reduction to their assessment rate and also keeping a 10% contingency. Now, in May, when this comes before you, you can decide to cap the contingency at 5% instead of 10%. That would be a decision of the council. And then whatever that difference is, can then further reduce their assessment rate where they wouldn't then be paying it in the following year.
And how much again did we have to dip into last year's contingency to make up the difference? Was it greater than that 5%?
I'm sorry, can you?
Sorry, you're right, let me rephrase. So normally we keep a 10% contingency, right, for each guard gate district, correct?
Well, in last year, because a lot of the, some of the districts had an increase to their guard, not all the districts are at 10%.
Yeah, they had to dip into that.
Yes.
But budgeted, it was 10%, right?
So last year was the first year where not all of the contingency reserve was budgeted at 10%.
Okay.
And that was a decision that the prior council had made, that it could not exceed 10%.
Correct, that was there, I just need to be reminded, so thank you.
It did not have to be capped at 10%. So this one in particular is at 10%. The Lockloman is at 8%. And then Royal, the two other Royal Oaks are at 5%. So that's a decision that maybe you as a council can decide if you want to cap it for 5% for everyone.
So in section one, though, it was 10%. And to make up the difference in the increase in the guard, I guess, I believe I had heard you mention that we had to dip into their, for section one, just speaking on section one, we had to dip into their 10% reserve. We had to dip into their ten percent reserve. Do you know how much, or can you recall by how much we had to dip in?
No, sir. I mean, I'm basing it off of what I have before me. My assumption is that, I would have to do further research, but looking at this, my assumption is that.
And again, this is all very preliminary, it's all fine, but yeah, that will be something I'd be interested in knowing as we make a decision on whether to reduce or not, you know, the reserve on that one. Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe you had a question? And then Councilman Fernandez, and I guess anybody else? Councilman Hersberg, did you want to speak after Councilman Fernandez? Councilman Quadro Garcia? Listening? Okay, perfect, all right. So then that'll be the order, the Vice Mayor, Fernandez, and then Hersberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Help me to understand, why are we budgeting for a projected carryforward? Isn't that basically assuming that we're over budgeting? That part confuses me.
Again, the carryforward is taking, you have to deduct then the, the contingency reserve. If the contingency reserve doesn't get used, it gets carried forward into the next year.
So, so this forty-seven, sorry, I circled over. Forty-seven, one eighty-ish, that is actually carryforward?
Forty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight of that is carryforward. Is, is contingency, excuse me. So if you see on the amended budget, you see that there's forty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. And then you see in the year-end projection, there's zero, because a contingency reserve line item, there should never be an expense there. That is like essentially a saving. So if anyone wanted to utilize money from the contingency reserve, they would have to come before this council and request to transfer that money out of that line item to whatever project they may want to do within their district.
But okay, so if forty-three thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget weren't, were not applied, then they're being added in as revenue in the preliminary budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then where are the other?
So then that forty, that forty-seven, part of that forty-seven now in that preliminary budget is funding that twenty-eight thousand in that year's contingency reserve.
Okay, and where's?
And then, so another, is it this one? No, not this district, sorry.
What was that?
That I was confusing this with another district that I had in mind, so I was gonna make a comment, but it doesn't apply to this one.
I guess the, the question I have is twenty-eight thousand is going towards funding the current contingency reserves from the carryforward. I guess what are we applying the rest of the forty-seven to?
So I can tell you some of the things that have increased. So in this particular budget, we have increased the, the mailout. They before had only one mailout, but now that there are going to be a quarterly meeting, there will be four mailouts for each quarterly meeting, a fifth mailout for the budget meeting that we have, and then an additional meeting for anything that may arise. So in the prior budget, the board at that time requested to only have one mailout budgeted. Now, this is including the four quarterly meetings, you all will be having the budget meeting and an additional meeting. So that's one increase. I'm gonna hand it over to JP, because he's asking for the.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's for the four quarterly meetings, plus the budget letter, plus an additional mailout in the event that it's needed. For example, right now, we're gonna be closing Seventy-Ninth Ave for striping, right? How do we communicate that? So I would have to send out a mailout to all residents, letting them know that we need to have funding available, even if it's just one per year to have something available in case of an emergency to send out, to communicate to the residents.
Yeah, I still, I still don't understand why it's a projected. Wouldn't a carryforward just be a carryforward as opposed to a projected carryforward?
So it's projected because we don't have actuals for our current budget. We won't close out our current budget until December, which is way after our budget, our twenty-five, twenty-six budget has been adopted. That's why when we have our meeting that we just had last council meeting, I'm amending the budget to take into account our actuals, because we have all our actuals at the moment. So I have it as projected, so that it's clear that this is not a final number. It will be amended, but it will be amended in.
It has to do with our fiscal year and when we close out our final books.
Correct.
Okay, got it. And Madam?
So just, just one question. The closing of a street that is not within the district, that has nothing to do with special taxing district, has to use the mailing cost through the special taxing district?
I think in that particular instance, we're talking about Royal Oaks, I think what it is, is to let those inside the NSD know that it's not going to be available. So it's as a courtesy to them, but that is an interesting point.
That is, that is.
That's a town, that's a town.
I could go ahead and answer that, that we're re-striping the guardhouse, which is in fact part of the special taxing district.
So you're not talking about section one?
Not at all, not at all.
You guys aren't on Seventy-Ninth at all, anyway.
Okay, but section one has six mailers, and it went from whatever to six thousand and something?
You had budgeted previously, one, in the advisory board, they had budgeted for one mailout, period. No other mailouts. We no longer have advisory boards, we have quarterly town council workshops. We have four of them. We need to notify the residents that those workshops are going to be taking place. So that, so that's four mailouts, a budget letter, so that's five, and an emergency one. That's six.
Ma'am? Name and address, please.
Good evening. When they were doing the drainage project and the guardhouses on the west side, you remember, who's ever on the west side, Hersberg? They used to, GRS would email us, and we don't have to pay for mailings for that. Why, for striping for, you know, I don't know, hours? Why are we doing that? Why are we paying for those mailings? I don't understand that.
Really quick, though, if you can, just for those watching at home, your name and address, just like the other speakers had to do.
Oh, sorry, I always forget. Thank you. Irene Gutierrez, eighty twenty-five Northwest one sixty.
Excellent, yeah, because I know you, but, but, you know, again, for everybody else's benefit. No worries. So I don't know, Councilman Hersberg, if you want to take this, since it was addressed to you, if you want to take the stab at it?
Yeah, that's fine. So first, I mean, I don't know if you're, that was an example, because I think the, the stripings go be for like half a day or something, but I agree, I would, well, two things. One, GRS does not, the HOA does not represent the entire taxing district, that's number one. Number two, he's asked, GRS doesn't want to do that anymore.
But I don't understand, because when we, when you guys had the drainage on the west, there's a section there that is not HOA, that's not in the HOA either. And I had a whole bunch of GRS emails, I'm sure you guys did, you know, telling us, hey, you know, the guardhouse is still not operational, the drainage project is taking long. How many emails did we get?
A lot, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'll bring that back to GRS and the board. They've been told they don't want to do it anymore, and I'll try to make, I'll try to switch.
The taxpayers, because they don't want to.
What I've been told, it does cost the HOAs, well, JP was dealing with this earlier.
I spoke with the board, and they, I'm sorry, the HOA board to get clarification on that. They get charged every time by the HOA. So if it's something that is special taxing district related, you know, they were doing us a favor at first to go ahead and put out notices to the, on behalf of the town. But at, there gets to a point where, you know, the HOA is not responsible for the special taxing district as a whole, so it should come, any, any mailouts or anything like that should come from the special taxing district.
So when we have the drainage project on our side, we're not gonna get notified by GRS anymore?
Probably not, but I think that we were getting charged regardless, whether it was through GRS or the town. You know, we, as residents behind that, that, those gates, we're gonna get charged one way or another. You know, the way that we communicate all of, all of our events, all the, all the things that we have going on. So I think to his point, whether or not we were getting charged through GRS, and unfairly, because I think the, the entire community behind the gates should, should be partially responsible for, for those mailouts, right? So that's just my, what I believe.
Well, if you may. You're right, but let's be clear, GRS is sending it on behalf of the HOA, right? Only goes to the homes that, well, first, the residents that give an email, and second, the homes that are within the HOA. It's a tool, right? I hope that we can get it back. My understanding is they charge the board, the board doesn't want to take that cost, it's up to the board to not take on that cost. But it's definitely a tool to get the word out as much as possible, so.
I think the president and the board member would like to speak. Pause one second, our next speaker.
Hi, Homero Cruz, eighty-five fifteen Northwest one sixty-nine Terrace. I'm a resident of Royal Oaks, and I'm the current president of the HOA. Couple of things I want to say. In November, when I was here, and Brian, you know, I love you, I love you too, Josh, and I told you that abolishing the NSD committee was going to create problems, and we see it now. We used to do all the work for you guys. We used to meet every other month, two, three hours. This is not Math one-on-one. This is a little bit complicated. And you gotta go with the numbers. Melissa and JP, we used to do an excellent job. As a fan, for six years, I was the chairman of that committee, and I had a lot of people helping me, great residents. We didn't raise a penny. Right now, I don't like what I see. We're gonna have issues. Guys, when it ain't broke, don't fix it. God has a simple plan for complicated people like every one of us. Section one had an issue. And then that's when Brian came in and said, we gotta abolish the NSD. You came in with the idea, all or nothing. Everything went to waste, six years down the hill. Now, we're trying to do in two hours, what is gonna take at least eight or nine hours. Because the committees used to meet for two hours, two and a half, each single committee. Now, how many of us are here? How long is this gonna take every time we're gonna have a workshop? It's gonna take a long time, it's not fair to you guys. I said in November, wait till JC gets one, Steven, Quadra, they live in Miami Lakes. You guys had the four votes. It was you, Brian, Marilyn, and Koyas. You know, there was no need for that. I don't want to come back. I want to thank you, because I now have more time to spend with my grandkids. So I want to thank you for that. But that doesn't mean that you guys know me. I love this town, and I'm gonna be here. And I'm not going to go on social media and say what I feel. I want to say it here, I want to say it to you guys. And when you do an excellent job, I will be here telling you to. And you know that I have done that already.
I guess my question, though, to you, because again, you mentioned there was something about this particular budget that you didn't like. So that, that's what I wanted to drill into, unless I misunderstood what you meant.
Well, back in the days, when the budget, remember that the NSD didn't have the final decision. We were only an advisory board. We will do the homework for you guys. And through Melissa and JP, that will come to you guys, and you guys will make the final decision. It was always your final decision, okay? We do a lot of things in Royal Oaks that the town is not even aware of it. We clean Eighty-Second Avenue and Seventy-Ninth Avenue. Juan Carlos knows about that. It's costing us eighteen thousand dollars a year. Because the town is not cleaning Eighty-Second Avenue or Seventy-Ninth. The residents are complaining. Why are we paying eighteen thousand dollars for something that we don't have to be doing? Same thing happened when JP called GRS, they called me up, Homer, what do we do? Abel is part of the committee as well now. We said, we're not gonna do it anymore. That's it. It's costing the residents money. And it's not fair for the residents to keep dishing out the money when the town should be picking up this.
But just to be clear, you don't have any specific objection to the budget that's being presented tonight by Melissa and by JP?
Well, again, I just saw it right now.
Okay.
So.
But again, I just wanted to be clear about when you said that you, you had some issues.
I just saw that you're gonna raise the fees.
Well, again, they, and again, it's the same.
That's the proposed budget, but it's gotta go to the first and second reading.
Of course, yeah, and we're gonna have more time, yeah, this is not final, we're gonna have more time to beat this up. And again, it's the same work product that you were getting from Melissa and with JP, and I see Melissa with the microphone up.
When we used to have, Mr. Mayor.
Let him finish, and then, and then, you know, you can jump in.
When we used to have those workshops, it was only the same people. I mean, it's always the same group of people. Residents don't get engaged, they really don't want to participate, because they think that their time is more valuable than yours and mine. And then they go on social media, insulting everyone and their mothers. You know, but they don't want to do the work. That's not right. I commend you for what you guys do. When you do it right, I will let you know you're doing an excellent job. And when you do it wrong, I'm gonna tell you. Abolishing those committees, that was the wrong decision, and I will always let you know about that one.
Understood, and we would expect nothing less. Can I, can I address the? Yes, you may, but just keep in mind, everybody, that Melissa would like to jump in. So actually, why don't we, because given the way she's looking at me, why don't we let, let her speak really quick to address something there, and then, and then we'll keep moving.
Just to address Homero's comment about the increase, the reason that there is an increase is because the hourly rate for the guard has gone up, we piggybacked, because your contract expired, and we piggybacked off the contract in this current council meeting in April. So the cost is going from twenty dollars and thirty-two cents to twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
How much of a percentage is the rates, three, five, seven, ten percent? How much is SFM asking?
I don't recall.
For the audience.
Well, the thing is, it's a piggyback.
Hold on, everybody, just for the public record, just wanted to make the public watching at home aware, and for the record, that Homero Cruz was asking her what that translates, what the increase translates to into a percentage. And then I believe JP was gonna answer that.
So Miami Lake Section One and Lock Lomond have a contract in place until, I want to say, twenty-twenty-seven. Yours was expiring, yours has been added to that contract effective October first. So October first, all the special taxing districts will all be under one contract. You will all go out to bid at the same time, because if you go out to bid now, you're gonna pay a lot more. You're gonna pay a lot more than that price. Okay, so if we were.
Manny, Manny, hold on, hold on. Because remember that, because it's a public meeting, we do need to try to get as much of the dialogue that goes on the record. So, you know, if anything, just wait until you get to the mic, and then, you know, again, it'll be easier than me having to constantly do a play-for-play for, for the cameras. But with that, Councilman Fernandez did want to say something that will go to Mr. Abel Fernandez, you know, for his remarks. No, I just think that it's, it's a good idea to, to actually cut that from, from the HOA budget, because we've increased the litter crew by two, by two more crew members. So I think that we would supplement what the deficiency in the past for the litter. Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, Abel Fernandez, chapter one nineteen. Thank you for all of you, well, the, the five of you that are here. I don't see two, that would have been nice to see everyone at this budget meeting.
I just want you to know that one of them actually is in courses for his masters.
Okay, great, yeah, I. All of us, right, all of us have commitments, that's right. I'm sure you and Brian have court cases that you're preparing for, but you're here, thank you. In respect to, I wanted through the chair, answer Stephen, what he said, reference Royal Oaks Homeowners Association. We are not the exclusive association for all of the community, neither section one or east. Sending out an email, and that's our issue, not yours, but sending out an email through our management company is incurring a cost to us. Not to the whole community, A. B is, if you're not part of our association, you don't get the email. So I support the mailouts. So everyone is not dependent on a computer, and at the same time, everyone gets the document. I did speak to JP, he called me last night, I couldn't get the call, but I did call him today, and we discussed it, but as a board, we had voted or took a poll, right? That we would not send this out, we're trying to keep it as clean as possible. In respect to the budget numbers that I see here, obviously, the security service is much like with the town's police contract, is, is the bulk of our expenses, eighty percent of our budget is, is the, the security expenses. I'd like to talk about two items that may defer this, some. One is, in section one, the homes that are gonna come on board from Palma del Lago, is that what it's called? There's thirty-seven homes there. So I think they would be completed partially during the twenty-five, twenty-six budget that you're looking at, correct? So I'd like for you to take those numbers into it, because there are thirty-seven properties more on our side. We can, I don't want to hold up everybody, but just, these are just bullets for you guys to.
I can address that. I get the tax roll from the property appraiser. I usually get that around this time, I have not received that yet. And in that, then they provide to me the homes that have come online already. Just because they're being built and they're in the whole process, doesn't mean that they're online yet, so.
Understood, that's, that's why I said.
That's why I wanted to address it, so the public also hears.
If they come on during, I'm sorry, through, through the chair?
Again, this is more informal type meeting, so.
But if they come on during the next budget year, at some point, they need to be prorated for.
It would be added then into our budget.
Right, that's all I wanted to be sure, that's the question, it was more of like.
Whenever they, they send me that file, we go through it, we check it. Whenever they, they send me that file, we go through it, we check it, we verify that it matches.
This year may be different because we elected a property appraiser and a tax collector.
The process would be the same in that aspect.
We hope, yeah, we hope.
The process would be the same in that aspect. Nothing has changed.
I believe in terms of when the tables are compiled and released to the municipalities are actually set by statute. So that's why, you know, it's not discretionary on Dariel or Tomas as far as when they release it to us. It's a strict statute of enforcement. I've had a few cases of disputing tax bills, so.
Right. So, right, I just wanna make sure we're counting at possibly that. The next question that I had was, if you remember last year, some of you were here when the LPR camera issue came up. And then the, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was voted on, I think Mr. Councilman Moreira talked, took the lead on that, that it should be a townwide expense and not an association expense, or a special taxing district expense.
Correct.
With that said, two parts to this question. There was money at the time that was a discussion. And the mayor at the time said, well, I would like to make a motion that we reimburse them. And I think that that motion failed, but we would leave the money, we would leave the money kind of like in reserve that was paid. So I asked about that money and I was told that a decision was made that we would not be getting that money. And I said, okay, so who made this decision? Again, third party, but you know, town employees. And they said that that decision was made by, I guess it's the division manager over the special taxing districts.
When you were told, we would not be getting that money.
We, the NSD? We as in Section 1 and Royal Oaks.
So it wouldn't go, we won't get the money as in it wouldn't go into contingency reserve? That's what you were told?
Well, we were told when you guys met that it would. But then I just found out that the decision was made that that money that we all paid for, but you guys, I believe it was in January, right? I made the decision, so the whole tax year is ahead. But now we're not getting that money as back into kind of like a fund in, for extra money on this budget. I don't want the money back to my house. What I wanna see is a line item with that amount of money.
Yeah, or at least to a council.
If I may also address that, if I remember correctly, and we can go back and look at our budget hearing, I believe at our budget hearing, it was decided by the previous council that you would not be reimbursed for what was already charged to you, but you would not get charged moving forward. So this current budget that we're in, you did not get any expenses regarding LPRs for your districts. But you were not necessarily gonna get reimbursed for whatever had been charged to you previously. That, I believe, is in our minutes.
I'm not downing that, but through the chair. But the point is, when that was passed, I believe the budget had already occurred, right? We were getting our tax bills from the county. So in the tax bill from the county, our special taxing district amount, which was, and again, I'm open for corrections all the time. I think it says here that for Section 1, we were.
So in 2022.
756 per unit. And then Royal Oaks East was 82589 per unit. So that's what we paid for.
Yes. That's what you're currently paying in this current budget.
Right, so that included, that included the LPR cameras.
No, it did not.
It did not.
It did not. And if you notice in our, even on the paper that you have before you, if you look at the adopted budget for 2425, and you go down to the line item that says computer software licenses, it is the last line under the operating cost subtotal, right before the capital outlay cost subtotal. Do you see it, sir?
Right, so that computer software.
So that computer, that would've been where, it would've been charged. And if you notice under the adopted budget 2425, there's $0 there. The years before, those were charged because the decision that was made was made at the last budget.
Okay, so that's what that computer software license is.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so I understood that it was 12,000, it was 12,250 per guard house. That was the license, according to my public records request that the town clerk provided to me. So that would've been 25,000 more or less for each side.
I wanna say that it was 12 for both, but if that is what.
Right, but I mean, that can be, you can look into that.
I think the gist of his question is what happened to that money. Is that correct?
Right, she says it was backed out on this paper, that it was backed out. That's why it says zero for adopted budget. That's what this computer licensed software is.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm good with that explanation. I just want you guys.
To be aware of it.
Just trust but verify if you could on that, yeah.
But I see where he's going with that. It's like, okay, so if we ended our rental of the system early, then presumably there was some money left over and, you know, where is that money now?
So if, I would have to listen to the minutes of that meeting because I don't have that always in the top of my head. I'm sharing what I do remember. But if you did not get an assessment reduction because of that, which I'm assuming that you didn't because at this point that was at the budget hearing and you cannot, at that point, I couldn't have changed your assessment rate. So what I'm going with my logic is that it went to the contingency reserve.
Okay, well.
It stayed, whatever money is in.
No, I'm not saying that someone took it. I just wanna make sure where it's at.
Yeah, if anything, it would've gone to the contingency reserve.
Okay, good. I, I don't know what the rate of guards are. I don't know. I hear level one, level two. That's not my expertise at all. I don't think that $800 a week is much of a living wage anyway. So I don't have an issue with that. But I'm hoping that we're shopping it out with all the other experts that know how to deal with these, you know, bids. Maybe that's the rate or maybe this is cheap. I don't know. So I can't tell you that I'm unhappy for what I don't know. But that's, I'm looking back from 2122, we were paying for Section 1, 706, and we're now going to 88350. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good chunk. Again, my concern is what's happening this year and you all are victims of what's happening. You see what your grocery bills are like.
That and the minimum wage is going up as well.
The minimum wage is going up. We don't know what the costs are going to be for a lot of things in this county as different departments are gonna have their own budget. It's no longer under the county. And I support spending money to make our town better, but it's squeezing everybody. And, and, you know, I thought that there would be a decrease in products and that's not what's happening. It's actually going up and worse than what I thought. This is just adding to a lot of folks that may not be able to afford that extra $130 a year. I can do it, but there's a lot of folks in our community and, you know, JC knows them and so does Angelo. And I ask, you know, it's a good team here that you guys look at these numbers and see what we can do. In respect to Angelo Garcia, I'd like to say one thing and I hope you guys take this to heart because I say it here rather than anyone else. Angelo was voted in by 8,400 plus members of the community. Not everybody shows up to vote. I did vote and support him, as I did you all. And I want there to be some type of more respect on the dais. You guys don't see it sometimes, but looking from outside and you're seeing on TV, if Angelo says something that is not perfectly set up grammatically or his syntax, let's keep the chuckles to ourselves. I, you know, I'm not here to insult anybody, but Angelo works very hard. And, you know, it's not about being polished. It's about what you get done at the end of the day. But thank you for all of you for being here and letting us talk so you could hear these numbers. I'll digest more and hopefully provide some comments at a regular meeting. Thank you for everything.
And JP did have one more thing he wanted to address toward one of your comments. So before you go, maybe it'll be, you know, better to set up the mic in case you follow.
Yeah, I wanted to address your conversation right now and prior about the bidding process. So we went out to bid two years ago. And the lowest bid was SFM's bid by a pretty decent margin, okay? Since then, costs have gone up, minimum wage has gone up. It's fair to speculate that the next bid process will go up as well. Now, if the council deems it that we should go out to bid, we are happy to do so. But they voted to piggyback in the previous meeting, which is why you are now on SFM's contract with the Miami Lakes Section 1 contract. Again, prices, as you mentioned, have gone up. And part of that is minimum wage. And base, making a, making a decision on that when they were the lowest bid two years ago, it makes sense that that would be the cheapest price for you all.
And then to piggyback off of him, that's why you have an increase to your assessment rate. Because since at the last council meeting, the council decided to piggyback off that contract because your contract expired, your, the hourly rate for the guard went up. So in essence, then, the total cost went up for your district, which is why we had to raise your assessment rate.
And through the chair, and regarding guards, I heard something about this level one, level two. I guess one is less than the other. So what do we have on Section 1 and if I could speak for my friends in East?
Your, your level two guards.
So maybe going to a less expensive guard may be what we should look at. So we minimize these, I'm sorry, back to the council. So we minimize these, you know, I mean.
Again, this is a more informal meeting.
Right, yeah. I don't know what the difference is.
I had this conversation with JP today. So JP, if you wanna explain the level two, level one thing, it doesn't seem like there's a big difference in, I don't know.
I'm actually gonna let SFM explain it themselves. I'm gonna put them, George from SFM.
I'll give up the podium unless you.
No, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. Whenever Mr. Fernandez speaks of Section 1, I just want, let's try to say Royal Oaks.
Royal, right, I apologize. It's Royal Oaks Section 1.
Royal Oaks Section 1 and Royal Oaks East. But West is referred to as Section 1. But it's Royal Oaks Section 1, not to be confused with Miami Lakes Section 1.
Correct, correct. Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Garcia, thank you for your hard work.
I'm gonna pass it on to George real quick to go ahead and answer the question.
Good evening. My name is Jorge Gonzalez. I'm the operations manager for SFM Security. So I'm just gonna read out rather than say it from memory because it will be a lot better. So level one security guards, there's the minimum of three years experience of, as a licensed security guard. Minimum of one year of military experience, civilian or military law enforcement or correction accreditation. Four-year bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university and one year of experience as a licensed security guard. And/or two years of an associate's degree from an accredited college or university or, and two years experience as a licensed security guard. Now, the level two, it picks up on the credits that you have for college and military as well. So level two security guard services are minimum of five years experience as a licensed security guard. Minimum of two years military experience, civilian or military law enforcement or corrections accreditation. Four years bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university or two years experience as a licensed security guard. And/or two years associates from an accredited college or university or three years experience as a licensed security guard.
Question, is it possible for us to get whatever you were just reading off of? Because I've been wondering what the difference is between these and I'm gonna forget everything you just said.
Vice Mayor, my understanding, the difference is their experience, for the guards we have at least, it's their experience as a guard. Someone who's level two had a few more years of experience. Personally, I honestly don't know if there's, for us, for the guards we have, I live in Royal Oaks. I don't know if there'd be a big difference between a level two and a level one. We, I, I, let me just say, I would like to know the difference in pay because I don't know what the service, level of service would change between a level two and a level one.
One second. Anybody else before, okay, Manny, go ahead.
Manny Lopez, 8435 Northwest 169 Terrace, Royal Oaks West. Mr. Mayor, JC, gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to give us this time. I'm very well experienced in this field. As you all know, I do own a security company. I have no intentions ever bidding on a contract in the city of Miami Lakes. And I wanna make that very clear. None. I will not do that. But what I do see is, this was rushed onto us right now and I like the transparency. With what was, just said with the one and level two and, let's start by something very common. The contract calls for English and Spanish, bilingual. We don't have that. Not even in level one. We have problems, guys. And on top of that, you wanna give me a 3.11 raise? It's not happening. We need to be transparent. We need to put bids out and let other companies bid. Just because you have a contract, especially in the government, doesn't mean that you're bound to it. In 2016, my company ran the unaccompanied contract for the federal government in Homestead, bringing in the unaccompanied kids. At approximately, I was billing 10,000 hours a week. This contract, for all the guys that you don't know, the biggest STD contract in De County is Royal Oaks, the biggest. So how in my field it works is, the more hours you give us, the rate must go down. It's very simple. Right now, we have 672 hours weekly on both sides. The biggest contract in De County, STD. We need to put this out to bid. We need to be transparent. The other thing that I wanted to go into is that I have a home in the east and one in the west. I purchased the clickers and they're great. The only thing is, is that where I live, on my side, I have to go into 168. And 168, you can't go in. So I am requesting for you to take in consideration of putting a little module, the same as the one in 162nd. So when I come in, sometimes I can relieve the guard or if the guard is busy, I can go in myself and I don't have to stop and wait. If we can do this for the east and for the west, it would be great. It would take a lot of, it would take some pressure off of them too. And it will work better for everyone. So we just need one for 168 and then the, both for 168 on both sides. Yeah, correct. That's basically all I wanna say. I wanna thank you for your time. I'm really good at this. I do this every day. And I think it should go out to bid and let the best man win. Thank you.
Actually, so JP, about the clicker situation on 168, have we looked into that?
I have looked into it. I, my opinion, and we've, him and I have talked about this in the past, I think it would be a liability to have a lane that is one lane, no residential lane, being used by a clicker for a resident because the guard does not know that the vehicle has a clicker. The reason it works in a residential lane is because it's a way. And so it's not going to, I personally think it's a liability and it would not be a good option. I have stated before, there are other options. If we were to add, for example, I'm trying to remember the name right now, stickers on the cars, then the guard himself will just open for the resident, like we do in Lock Lomond, and just let them in. No need to take a picture, just go straight in. And that way, the guard has control of those lanes. No need to take a picture, just go straight in and that way the guard has control of those lanes. But if you do it where the resident can just open and God forbid, the guard is not paying attention or anything and they open. Could cause an accident. So. It's up to you guys how you want to handle it. That's just my opinion.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to to ask about that. Um, before we continue on, eh Melissa, if you can just remind me, so we covered section in terms of the budget, we covered uh section one, Royal Oaks. Eh, did we go through the lake uh NSDs? Okay, so why don't we pick it up where we left off and and continue presenting the budget on the other uh STDs since we're no longer part of the NSDs? Um, and uh, prepare for the chuckles, everybody, and then and then, yeah, we'll continue on with the agenda.
Mister Mayor, before she does that.
Mister Vice Mayor.
Is it possible to just ask if there's anyone here who's specifically here on one of the non-budget items? May- maybe just so if they're waiting around and they don't have to hang around if they don't want to.
All right, Lydia, name and address, please.
Lydia Hernandez, seventy-nine forty-one Northwest one hundred and sixty-sixth Street. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for listening to us. You're very patient, all of you. And I appreciate that. It seems like you're on task and you're not ignoring us. Um, the last time we were here till very late at night, we were the last item of the agenda regarding reading the licenses. Are we there yet? Am I, cuz I've been waiting to see if we got to that.
Well, we're we're giving you an option to speak on it now and and perhaps we'll even take that item out of order, you know, again, this is meant to be a more free-flowing kind of meeting.
So I'm okay to talk about that?
Yeah, of course.
So um, I I was very confused. We went back and forth and back and forth and after I thought about what you said. And I started to think, Lock Loman always has preferential treatment as far as I'm concerned. That's my personal opinion. And we seem to be the forgotten community, uh Royal Oaks East. Um, you said that they had the license reader, the license readers twenty-four hours a day. We can't even get you to approve the ones at night. We would like to have equal treatment. We would like to have it twenty-four hours a day too. It would be great. We keep having more and more robberies. Uh, the other day there was on our WhatsApp group, another person whose car was stolen and quite frankly, it's scary to be out there. And uh, especially if you live alone as I do and to see all of this happening, all of this crime coming into our neighborhood and sometimes in broad daylight. And so I would like you to really reconsider allowing us at least to have the license readers, uh the licenses be read at night.
A Councilman Hursbury, I think, wanted to address that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so last meeting, we did approve moving that. I had an hour and a half meeting with JP today to just start moving that forward. I expect to have something come up in May so we can get that going. I'm not going to allow it to happen immediately cuz we got informed residents, it has to be done in orderly fashion. Our, my position right now is is start the nighttime and see how it goes and if it if everything's going well and smoothly, we can look at adding to the daytime. So that is moving forward. I mean, it still has to be approved by by the council. They approved the last motion to start working on it. I am working on it. I I expect to have something before all of us in May that will get it a start date. And the start date right now, I would like to see is August first just because we need time and we need time to let the residents know. Use the budget mailer to put in extra information about what we're planning on doing and it's the eleven. Nothing is set in stone, but either be start time at ten or eleven and end at uh probably six AM, maybe even seven AM cuz the shift changed. So there's still things in motion, but. I hope to have that done. It's just not gonna happen right away.
Okay, also keep in mind that we have the change of time in November, so you might want to adjust the hours to flow with the change of time. But I wanted to see if there's anything you could do to make it faster than August because that seems a very long time.
Maybe, uh, that's something I'll discuss, but the the reason why is we, I want to make sure that every single resident. In the two districts that we're going implement this first on are aware of the change. So everyone can go get their clicker and things like that. If there are people that go in and out a lot at night, uh, I want to make sure they're they're aware. I want to work with the security guard company, make sure they. They're aware and start training and whatever they need to do, make sure it's implemented correctly. There might be some signage issues that we want to take care of and things like that. So. Uh, I don't want to do it hastily, right? It's gotta be done well and and then implemented and hopefully just implemented. That's it. That's the new standard and we don't go back and forth at all.
No, I agree with you on that. Um, I just wanted to understand the reason why. It seems that Lock Loman gets preferential treatment, gets everything done quickly. And then our side, the forgotten side, as I like to call us, everything gets postponed, the meetings get put out, you know, you want to study it some more. Or you didn't study it that much when you gave Lock Loman twenty-four hours to look a day.
If I may, uh, I can assure you that Lock Loman actually feels the the same in the reverse though, right? Um, you know, they're finally getting some drainage projects, for example, done and for a long time and I remember getting this comment when I would walk there during the campaign. They often feel like they're the ones that are forgotten, right? Uh, I will say that I think it is helpful that they tend to speak with one voice through Pat usually. Um, you know, and they're they're usually on the same page. Uh, in this case, for example, I know that, for example, the president of your HOA is not in agreement with the change of using. Uh, the guards to ask for a license, uh, you know, prior to entry, you know, or at least to attempt that because it can, well, et cetera. Um, eh, so I do think that that is what also helps them get certain uh changes implemented faster because they're they're speaking together. And also, you know, but again, in terms of sentiment, they've they've also shared the same feeling that, well, the west side gets everything, you know.
Well, if I if I could just say that with respect to the drainage project, it only took me at least, if not more than ten years. Emailing your predecessors to get the drainage project, which was an epic fail on my street. Because as J C uh knows and um the other councilman that that was my Good Samaritan, to bring me um sandbags. Because I'm still the lowest point of the street because the trees have lifted everything up. So you wasted all that money and the street still floods and it floods in front of my house and water gets in my garage still.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, like perspective is is always different.
So it took me more than ten years of emailing the city and having meetings with the mayor and having meetings with the people in charge of public works, the predecessors to the person we have now. So it wasn't just done because we get preferential treatment, it's because I kept emailing them and finally something.
Oh, no, I agree with you. I'm just letting you know that, you know, everybody's gonna perceive that the other side is getting something more, but you know. But but again, I think part of it is that, you know, usually uh Pat's community, they speak through him and there's there's usually, um, they're usually on the same page on that. So I think that also helps.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Mister Vice Mayor.
I just wanna give a little bit of perspective from two different angles. One is from the. Former HOA board member in in Satori, we implemented this policy. Uh, it it was a mess for, you know, all of three, four days, five days. Eventually, people figure it out. Um, there's little, they look like stop signs. Uh, it's a stop sign, but instead of saying stop, it just says, please have ID ready or please pre- prepare to present ID. It's something like that, just something simple. Let the people know that way before they're showing up to the gate, when they're still the second or third in line, they're already getting ready and it makes things faster. Uh, the other thing is in terms of like just the the timing of it. My understanding, eh, based on county, county code, town code. This council by resolution can say, go, and and we can immediately implement this. We we don't need to wait. I I do think August is an exaggerated amount of time to need to wait. Um, at a certain point, if you need to wait till August uh to make sure every single person has received notice. Um, most of those people, you're probably trying to notify on multiple occasions and they're just not reading any of those notifications. Um, I think a good faith effort at some notice that it's not a complete disaster is warranted, but also not to the point of tying our hands. Um, I think even if you were to give until August of twenty twenty-six. You would still have a mess on day one, no matter what you do. It's always gonna be a mess.
I I don't think we're gonna have that much of a mess to begin with because it's only limited at nighttime.
Yeah.
Uh, the the, we were discussing August date because that, I don't know if it has to be August. I mean, it's about, I want to get something out to every resident. Uh, I don't know what the what the timing is of of the next mailer. I mean, we could spend money on additional mailer to just get something out or we can. Or we can do no mailer. That is a discussions we can have i- in May, but I I understand what you're saying.
JP, can't we just put some A frames in front of these things a couple of days before this thing goes into effect? And says. ID check, nighttime ID checking will start on Saturday. That's it. We don't need to waste money on a mailer. We, it's it's just simple. Is that something we can do?
If that's the, if that's what the council would like to do, I could absolutely put some A frames. Uh. We'll, I'll have to borrow some from a different department because Royal Oaks doesn't have any dedicated um A frames to use. We we did purchase some recently for as a as a change for the special taxing district. Yes, you are right. So we should be getting some soon. You are right, I forgot.
So we have enough for all of them.
Yeah, we will have, we will have some coming in soon.
And the other thing is also to be clear, we sit as the governing board for each and every one of these um special taxing districts individually. Uh, meaning if there are certain groups that, if there's a certain uh special taxing district that does not want this practice. Sure, if there's another one that, you know, uh, we've seen before, section one comes out very strongly on a on a specific position. That may be different from its sister uh special taxing districts, you should still listen to them because it is local government at the most local level. Um, we don't have to make an all or nothing approach on this.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to remind all of you that I be- I believe that part of the mailers is to really get out the word about the meetings. Um, we always, I always post twice on the Laker. Twice, meaning the two publications prior to the meeting and it gets posted on the website, on the town website, I want to say at least a month before. Because I work with JP and with Melissa, so they inform me. Regardless of an agenda being eh generated and published or not. Again, we take the, we take it so seriously and all of you, I know you follow us and I don't, we don't have any issues with all of you because that's why you're here. But we want to inform all our other neighbors and I'm speaking now not as a clerk, I'm speaking as a resident. I live in Royal Oaks. So I'm part of the special taxing district. We want to inform. That's an issue that we've had for so many years. We put it in the gatehouses for people to see. Our neighbors don't see it. So that's why I think I want to re- I want to believe that the mailers was not always in place. Think that started like a year ago and correct me, JP.
The mailers, I started um after the advisory boards were removed, I started sending out mailers. Um, to notify all the residents, yes.
I don't know what else to do. Communications Department does an ex- an outstanding job. If you could help us if you get the word out, but that is why they exist. We would save the money, believe me, if people were aware and they want to come.
You're absolutely right about the mailers. The only thing is their postcard, they're little. The signs on the guardhouse is just an eight by eight. You know, you can't really see. If you're gonna s- uh, stop in your car and read it, this fine print. Not even with my glasses. And then I want to thank all of you for the initiative again of the license plate reader. But I want to tell you that in the time that we've had to think about it.
Yeah.
They have taken three cars from Royal Oaks and I have a video of one of them. I'm sure it was on the WhatsApp. On Saturday, we were not even here, we were in Orlando, we got another WhatsApp that they broke into and they took another car on the west side, okay, on your side. And then on in my house, my experience is that because we have a certain type of car, I'm not gonna put it out there, I don't know who's listening to this. I had two guys in my driveway. I sent the picture of the two guys. Uh, one of your ex-council members and I forgot his name. I I have a terrible memory for names. Um, he's on our WhatsApp and he said, notify the police, but what I did was take a picture through their back as they exited my driveway. They were in my driveway.
Maybe it was Councilman Coriazo?
Yes, it was him. I I'm sorry, terrible memory for names. Anyways, he said, next time, you know, but they didn't take the car. What they did was that they tried to take the little compartment that holds the pl- the the hook where you, the tow truck hooks because. Because of the situation and the type of car, we bought the crowbar, we got the little Faraday bag to put your key in. We tried to, you know, change the cameras. We've done everything. But then guess what? When I spoke to Gonzalez this last meeting last week, the week after that I had that incident, they took his, my, the exact same make and model of the car in Lock Loman.
Yeah, and I just for the.
What's happening?
Yeah, no, for the record though, I just wanted to clarify that the, it's not that we're talking about license plate readers so much as asking. The guard, uh, the guardhouses as part of their post uh orders to go ahead and ask for the license. Um, and so I wanted to kind of do a mini poll for our section one members that are here. How do you guys feel about uh uh having your guard ask for licenses from, let's say, what what time do we do we? From from ten to seven in the morning.
Let me make this one quick, Mister Mayor.
Well, wait, hold on. Let me let me get my response from from them.
Oh, section one.
Yeah, yeah, the section one people first. Yeah. No, they can ask for the license, but they can't detain you. Uh, but it is, it has worked as a deterrent in other cases. So that's why I just wanted to ask how you guys feel would feel about that if. That were to be something, something that we would ask them to implement.
Right, and Miss Mister Mayor, so I can, so you guys are aware, the item that I brought forward yesterday, discussed putting it in front of all STDs, but we discussed and and you discussed this specifically, Mister Mayor. We haven't heard from section one about this issue. So my idea, when I bring it in front of May, is for the two Royal Oaks. Uh, STDs, not for section one, but if I get feedback from section one between then that they're interested in this, I would also add section one, but I have not gotten feedback from section one. I plan on going to HOA meetings and getting feedback from you guys. What I know is from people that live in Royal Oaks, I live there, that this is something that they would be interested in and that's why I would like to start it there first. So that that's a good question. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, our section one, meaning just Lake Glen Ellen, cuz there's seven different HOAs in our area, but in Lake Glen Ellen during our meeting. Um, Councilman Alejandro Sanchez visited us, which was really lovely and he talked about that and everybody went, you're gonna be asking for what in our area? But he said, oh, you don't need to worry, it's between eleven o'clock and whatever and the ones that were in the room were all pretty old, so at around seven o'clock, we give up on life, so really don't care. What it is that is happening and I have never gotten anybody to visit me that late at night, so I really would not even understand that it is happening, but it it was like a shock for everyone. Why would you do that here? But still.
Yeah, so the idea is that it's a deterrent, right? They're public roads, but you can still ask for it. If they present it, then great, you know, but then in some instance, and apparently this happened Royal Oaks not too long ago. Excuse me, Lock Loman not too long ago, when they were asked to present an ID, even though they didn't have to, they all of a sudden started backing up and they they left right away. So clearly that was somebody that was likely up to no good.
The other way around, SFM is here. How many people actually come into our area after eleven o'clock at night?
I mean, that's a different question and and worth knowing, but yeah, I just wanted to ask generally.
We have traffic later. I I really don't know cuz I'm not out there. I'm out there all day long.
I I know Boris is out there all the time, you know, no, it's kidding. But I just wanted to ask, since we have a pretty healthy contingent from section one specifically, Lake Glen Ellen, just wanted to know what, how you guys would have felt if we were to implement that, which is. A big part of why I had voted no last time, um, because it was gonna apply to everybody. Um, but with that, Mister President.
Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, thank you. Last time on the on the council meeting, this item came up last and you said that you wanted to study it more. And see how the residents would feel about it. Uh, we did sort of like a mini survey on one of our HOA meetings. Which usually we don't have more than twelve, fifteen people coming to those meetings, which is a shame. And it was like a a seventy, thirty, sixty. Uh, Lydia and uh. And Irene, they're all for the licenses. You guys know how I feel about the licenses and uh, like Rick says. The intent of Royal Oaks and all this special taxing district was always, i- it's a public road, it's not private. Each time we want to make it more private. It's like we want to become little communities within Miami Lakes. It's like we don't want anything to do with our neighbors. The reason I I I moved into Miami Lakes was exactly because I wanted that town feeling. I don't think we're getting that. I think we're moving and drifting away from that. I think your idea, Brian, creating these workshops was for people to vote on it. I believe this is an item that the residents should really vote on it. Royal Oaks has six hundred and sixty-six homes that belong to the HOA and there's like twelve other homes, twelve hundred homes outside the HOA. Between east and west. I don't think everybody wants the license. We tried it for a week. I went and I spoke with each guard on those gates. You don't want to know the things that they told me. Then we're asking SFM that we don't want to give them a raise, but we're asking them to do more. So what do we want? We can't have it all. Obviously, we want more services, we're gonna have to pay more. But remember, we will never be a private community cuz that was not the intent. It's public. It's public.
To be fair, to be fair though.
And one day, one day. Any lawyer. Might come up and say, I'm gonna sue the town for this cuz even though that I'm I'm not required, they're gonna ask me for my ID. I go to Lock Loman and I don't give it to them. I said, you gotta let me in. I'm not gonna give it to you. Lock Loman is also different. It's not that they get preference. Lock Lomen is also different, it's not that they get preferences, there's only two hundred and forty homes and all, all those homes are part of the HOA and they do have plenty of stock up for the cars. One sixty-eight and one sixty-seven, even at nighttime, they do the shift change at eleven. They get pretty busy at that time. I asked them, how many cars do you get? Sometimes they have ten, fifteen, twenty. You, you might be surprised if you're going to get backup traffic at that time. I still believe that we should put it for a vote and let the residents decide. Don't put this weight on yourself. Let the residents on each district decide by, by themselves.
Thank you, I think JP wanted to address that. So before, actually before you sit down, just in case he want, you wanted to ask a follow-up, Omero. Just in case uh JP was going to address your point and then just in case you wanted to ask him a follow-up, it'd be better if you stayed at the podium.
I just wanted to put on the record for the council that there is precedence for this, not only with Lock Lomen, but prior to Lock Lomen with Cocoa Plum and other special taxing districts, with uh Star Island.
Gables by the Sea maybe?
Gables by the Sea, exactly.
No, I mean, listen, it's clear as day, uh, the security guard can ask for the license, like that's not an issue whatsoever. The only thing they can't do is deny access and I'm not asking them to even take a picture of the license. I don't want that. And that was one of the things that I, I did not like about Lock Lomen, they can't, they shouldn't. It's in, 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 in Cocoa Plum, all, they actually don't even ask for a license. They make you put down the window to say, where are you going? Where, where are you heading to? And there's even a, an ordinance which I'm not in favor of the ordinance, but that says that.
In the Gables, I think they can even give you a violation if you don't say where you're going.
I don't know if anyone's ever given violation, I think that's an issue.
How legal that is.
I don't know how legal that is either, I don't think it is legal, no one's challenged it. Uh, there's where your lawsuit is, if, if someone wants to file a lawsuit against the city. Uh, but uh, this is just a gate guard being more observant, looking someone in the eye. The person just keep the window up and the gate guard's about to open it up.
On one sixty-eight and one sixty-seven, the guard gate is on the right, the driver is on the left. Twelve o'clock midnight, no lights inside the car, that guy's not going to see the driver's face. He's not going to know who's driving. For all I can think, I can give him my uh, uh, another type of ID and another driver's license.
I, I understand that, uh, but you know, it's something that our police commander thinks it's a good idea too.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, and Manny and, and then I think I see a couple of the residents, just so, ju- just so we know, it's eight oh seven now, um, just in the interest of making sure that we're able to cover everything else, uh, after Lydia speaks, let's let staff finish going through everything else that we got to go through so we can try to cover as much as possible and then, um, you know, we'll, we'll open it back up to the public. Uh, but Manny and then Lydia.
And I'll be right, I'll be quick on this. And I love my brother Omero, but we don't agree in the same, in the same manner. I am a security specialist, I've been in the industry since I was eighteen years old, I'm sixty-two. So, security is just a visual deterrent, right? It's a psychological effect for someone that's not in your area to look and say, there's somebody there. And I agree with Steven. He, he doesn't, he, we cannot deny access, but at least if, if we're proactive, we're a little bit safer. You're talking to somebody that my car was broken into, I had two semi-automatic weapons in my vehicle, that a police officer from this community can get shot with. This is important. If we can just push back a little and just let people know that we're, we're, we're looking, that's all we, we're asking, we're not asking for them to, you know, get out of the car, just ask. And that's all, and, and I thank you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you Manny, Lydia, and then we'll go back to staff.
I'm back to talk about what Omero, our president, said. Uh, obviously I don't agree with him, he is our HOA president and Mr. Hirschberg was at our meeting and we had unprecedented number of people there, and you heard them, wanting the license readers, the licenses read, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke. They all wanted the licenses read and they were very passionate. A lot of people went to the meeting and Omero himself says, we don't usually get that many people in our meetings because they wanted the licenses read because we feel like we're sitting ducks in our neighborhood. And that, uh, given the fact that we have so much crime and so many cars being stolen, something else has to be done. And I feel like the president of our HOA should do the will of the people and not his own personal opinion. Now, I also have been to Lock Lomen at night, Christmas Eve, as JP knows, because I bothered him that night to tell him. Um, they asked for the license on the opposite side. Of course, I did not give it to them, because I didn't think it fair that they can do it and we can't, but I didn't. And the gentleman was very nice. Um, but he still asked, that would serve as a deterrent if you're going to steal something. And I think it doesn't matter which side of the street your guard gate is, I think the west side of Royal Oaks should have it too, against what Omero is wanting. And if the traffic backs up, so be it, we're safer and let the people who are coming in deal with it and allow, allow themselves a little bit more time. I think from uh nighttime, from ten to six is not a big deal. Because I, I come back sometimes at eleven and twelve o'clock at night, there's nobody there on either side. So I would really appreciate if you would consider the will of the people and not the will of the president of the association, who he himself said cannot speak on behalf of the association in these meetings, so thank you.
Thank you Lydia, um, turning it back over to staff, eh, so, again, why don't you present the remaining budgets, right? So at least we get that into the record for those that may be watching online or watching later uh for those budgets. So let's, let's present those and then hopefully JP will be back by then so that we can move on to the other items.
Do you want, do you want me to go through um Lock Lomen, Royal Oaks, or you want me to do the lakes?
Eh, let's do the lakes.
So since we have taken over um the lakes from Miami Dade County, their assessment rate, I don't believe has changed since we initially took them over. Their contingency um is high and the reason being is because they have had talks about wanting to um implement like an aerator to their lakes. So the decision has always been just to keep seeing how they can um continue to increase their contingency reserve with whatever funds they don't use from year to year. I don't know what-
I'm sorry, we're on Lake Hilda by the way?
We're, we're, I'm just speaking in general for both at the moment. But the first one we will go over is Lake Patricia and then Lake Hilda. Um, JP's not here at the moment, he went to talk to one of the residents, but when he comes back, he can then address about the aerator or what he's discussed with any people from that district. I'm mainly speaking from when I've had this budget talk with them from last year. So um, their budget really hasn't changed much. Um, the only thing is that we have increased their water treatment service um for the additional service, only because that amount can either be used to add more fish to stock the lake or to do an extra cycle of treatment, depending on what is needed at that time. Um, so if you notice their special assess, their, for Lake Patricia, which is what I'll address first, they have seventy-two point five units, their current assessment rate is two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Um, for a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one and what they would receive um in special assessment. As I mentioned earlier, we do uh reduce like five percent for delayed payments or anyone that gets an adjustment or a discount. Um, and then they have the carry forward of ten thousand four hundred and seventy, um, a projected carry forward of ten thousand four hundred and seventy and for a total revenue of twenty-six thousand four hundred and twelve. As far as their overhead expenses, their direct cost is eighteen hundred dollars and their indirect cost is eight hundred and forty-one dollars for a total of two thousand seven hundred and twelve. Moving on to their operating costs, as we mentioned earlier as well, the freight and postage or the postage has gone up, it's seventy-three cents and we are budgeting it at six meetings, or six, I'm sorry, six mailouts for meetings. And then their water treatment is eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty, which is two services per month. An additional service for four months in the summer and then uh money to stock the lake and then any additional service that they may require. We have a, a line item for printing and binding and advertising for legal notices, as Gina mentioned earlier, when she sends out to the Miami Laker that there will be a meeting for the special taxing districts, leaving their contingency reserve at five thousand and twelve. And again, their total budget, twenty-six thousand four hundred and twelve. Uh, for Lake Hilda, not much different than Lake uh Patricia. Um, they have a little bit more number of units, they have a hundred and eleven units. Their assessment rate is a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. The total amount that they would receive in a special assessment is seventeen thousand five twenty-eight within the five percent deduction of eight seventy-six. And they would be carrying over twenty thousand, a projected carryover of twenty thousand for a total revenue of thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-six. Their direct and indirect cost is a total of three thousand six thirty-seven. Freight and postage, as I mentioned already, four eighty-six, water treatment seventeen, seven twenty-eight. Um, for their total operating cost of eighteen thousand four sixty-four. Their contingency reserve is fourteen thousand five fifty-five and again, their whole budget is thirty-six thousand six fifty-six. Um, I'm now going to give the microphone to JP so he can discuss anything regarding aeration for the lakes and what has been discussed with any of the residents regarding that.
Aeration?
Yeah, uh, she, she had brought it up, the aerators, so why don't you tell us about that?
We got a quote uh sometime last year for a, aeration, I don't remember the exact price, but it was something like twenty-seven thousand or something like that, it wasn't, it wasn't feasible at the time to go ahead and move forward with it. Um, we have recently, uh, we're working to amend the contract with Solitude Lake Management to add um lake maintenance standards, which are, are based on our, our existing uh level of service. Um, and the quality of the lakes have, are, are very good. Um, so aeration would be a plus obviously, but uh, not sure if, if, if that's something that is, is needed at this time, but if, if um, it's something that, that I could go ahead and get a quote if you guys wanted me to go ahead and, and look into again.
I would say it can't hurt, right? And, and again, the lake HOAs also tend to be pretty united in what the, what, you know, their, their leaders ask for, right? And they also tend to be on board with these uh, with these improvements, uh, it has been my experience. Um, so I would say come back to us with that for sure.
May, may I ask, uh, the, what brought about the idea of adding aeration to the lakes? Uh, was the lake maintenance contractor suggesting that it was needed, that it needed oxygenation? What was going, what, what prompted it?
The advisory board wanted to ask about it, that's simply-
Explore.
Just wanted to explore it to see the cost of it.
And, and when we talk about aeration, it's my understanding there's aeration, which is invisible to most people and then there's fountains, which is a different form of aeration for, for larger lakes, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But um, at least my experience with the, with the lakes, uh, you know, mainly with the non-NSD ones is that they add them because, you know, it, it keeps the water moving, right? And I remember when we would, exactly, and when we would do our uh lake awareness events all the time when I was chair of neighborhood improvement, they, the, that was something that they would always recommend that all lakes adopt and some of the lakes uh on their own through their HOA started adopting that. Like we saw Lake Martha has the fountains, uh, Lake Susie at one point did have an aerator as well. Uh, so you, you, we, we've seen where these lakes, uh, generally they want to make sure that they're, that they're healthy and thriving. In fact, I would even argue that the Lock Lomen uh HOA for its center lake might benefit from that. Um, and that's another issue that we got to tackle together, you know, as far as the uh lake ma- maintaining that lake, so. Um, but with that, okay, so what, um- Oh, sorry, I think you heard part of the discussion uh with respect to asking for the license, uh licenses, right? Um, so, and I think we basically covered all the uh, the special taxing districts that would involve that issue. So why don't we jump over to the capital improvement procedures? Okay, and I'm going to try to get us out of here in the next thirty minutes tops.
So Melissa, Melissa's done, I just wanted to clarify because she does need to go, is, is, okay.
No worries, and I know everybody else has to go as well, so we're going to try to pick this back up. No, you're, the merits, you're, you're not forgiven, no, I'm just kidding. All right, go, go ahead JP, floor is yours.
So um, some of this was uh just discussed um in my meeting today with, with uh council member Hirschberg. So I just decided to go ahead and add some of it, uh, because there was topics of discussion in our meeting. And uh, not by, by, by no means is this a tied agenda. This is just topics of discussion, you guys could discuss however you'd like. I, I just gave you some key points, um, if you'd like to discuss. The one thing that for, for uh me that would be um important to discuss right now would be the Lock Lomen guardhouse renovation. We did, I gave you uh the um, the signatures of ten percent of the community uh of the HOA um, signed off to uh look into adding to a ballot a um renovations for uh, I think there's three options, uh, a full uh entrance gate upgrade, uh, which would involve adding an additional lane to the area, putting the guardhouse in the middle of the, of the, the road, uh, similar to Seventy-Ninth Avenue guardhouse in Royal Oaks. Um, adding a residential lane and um adding a bathroom to the guardhouse. The other option that they, they uh are discussing is a guardhouse renovation of the existing guardhouse. And then the last one is, is to put on the ballot, no change at all, uh, do nothing. So I presented you this, I also have some quotes based on this document, I went ahead and got some in, more information. It's hard to get uh anything more than an estimate um on doing a full rebuild of the guardhouse just because we, we'd have to look into um, on, you know, having an architect design it and, and um get, you know, plumbing, things like that, uh, where the pipes are. So I wasn't able to get more than an estimate at this time, I can go ahead and, and get further information if this is something that is decided to move forward. Um, I do have some estimates for a renovation of the guardhouse currently, as it exists, without adding a bathroom. Uh, there, I, I left two of them on your, on your desk so you could see.
Yeah, I, I think it's always a safe bet, speaking on behalf of the council to, that we're, we're fine with getting estimates. And then, you know, if there's a desire to move forward at any point uh in accordance with the applicable law, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll follow that. But yeah, so I think getting more estimates, you know, can't hurt. Um, so-
Mr. Mayor.
Go, go ahead.
To be clear, uh, the town does not have discretion at this point, we have-
That's why I said with uh, according to applicable law, but you know.
We, we have to do a petition at this point because uh more than ten percent of Lock Lomen has submitted a letter of intent according to the uh special taxing district uh ordinance that we passed recently. Uh, so at this point, it's a matter of us creating that petition, eh, but I agree with the mayor, the more information that we're able to provide in that petition, the better, you know, an idea of, hey, here's how much this is going to cost us, you know, yes or no? Uh, but the more informed the decision everyone can make, the better. Uh, so let's get those quotes and then let's get ready to send out our petition and put this thing to the test.
Vice Mayor, what, petition goes out to by mail to the residents, how, how does that work?
Yes, uh, Gina, if I remember correctly, it was a mail-out ballot, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I, so, go ahead, I mean, I want to just be clear, so once we, if, once you get ten percent of the residents, then I, I forget the way the ordinance reads, then we have to send it out because I don't, I don't remember it being-
So, so- Very detailed uh ordinance that the vice mayor prepared, I think it would be safer for us to, oh, you have it there?
Yep.
Okay.
I will correct myself, the requesting party, either the HOA or the homeowners, will circulate the petition once we approve it. We, we have to a- approve the form of the petition, then the HOA would be the one that distributes it and make sure to come back to us with signatures.
But that's at the, that's at ten percent, right? Ten percent or more?
It triggers us to create the petition.
Okay.
So this is the letter of intent. This requires ten percent, which they accomplished.
Okay.
Now we circulate a petition based on this letter of intent.
And then-
Or sorry, they circulated.
And then just, uh, the petition goes out, you need fifty plus one? And then if a fifty plus one, do we, we still have the ability to say no?
Uh, if the support of at least fifty percent of the property owners plus one additional property owner is not attained on the petition, then the request for amendment to the existing special taxing district will have been deemed unsuccessful and no further progress will be made. If the support of more than fifty percent, but not more than sixty-six point six-six percent of the property owners is attained on the petition, then a legislative package will be prepared for approval before the town council, which if approved will require an election. If the support of more than two-thirds uh is attained on the petition, then a legislative package will be prepared for approval and enactment before the council. Uh, basically it's like, at that point-
We can, we can cross that bridge when we get there, got it.
Yeah, it, it's, it, it's a-
That's the first step.
It's a step by step.
There, that, that was a good summary. Um, so with that, and, and we kind of started going into it, why don't we go into uh, uh, unless I missed it, the Lock Lomen guardhouse renovation, I don't know if there's anything specifically you wanted to comment on that? Additional? Go ahead Pat. Go ahead, Pat.
Uh, one five eight six zero, uh, Wes Presswick, elected HOA president as of last week, again. But the idea is, there are improvements that need to be made to the guardhouse. And JP will address those as needed, but we got a brand new golf course going. Uh, that building's been sitting there for a long time with no um improvements to it. So, the idea is, well, you can, you know. Hammer a little away as you go, or let's just get together and do this thing right, one. Fix it all at one time, make it look great, synthetic with the golf course. Um, and then there's always those two or three people that are gonna wonder, well, if you're just gonna fix it. What would it take just to knock it down and build it again, why not? You know, make it look like a Disney world with, just kidding, but um. So that that's the idea, the three options, we can vote to do nothing and JP will fix it as he sees needs, I know we got the the electrical. The roof hasn't been uh touched probably in thirty years and um. With the the width of the the lanes. Um, we keep getting our, I don't know what you call those poles that operate the uh guard gate, but they keep getting knocked over. So, we do have construction trucks going in there, but when they're done, there'll be people doing their roofs. Um, the landscapers seem to be doing well and getting wider vehicles with dual tires on there, it's just, it's not very wide when you gotta. Uh, um, respect those yellow poles so our guard gates could work, so the idea was, one. Uh, repair it, repair it nice, two, well, what would it take just to do it upright, do it all from the start? And then all the residents agree, yay, that's coming back to them and they'll get to decide, yay or nay, this is my share of it. So.
Patrick, if I can ask, um, you, there's three separate options provided for for both the front and the back gate, which I am really appreciative of. But at the same time, uh as a council, when it comes to these letters of intent, we we are looking for a little bit more guidance from the residents, so when you were. I don't know if you were the one that personally went around and collected these or if someone else did, but.
Uh, I and another board member, yes.
So when you guys were going around, was there an inclination? In favor of one towards another of the options?
No, it it's totally up to our residents. You you, um, a couple of years ago, they were jumping that back gate to get into our community and, you know, test the cars. See if they were, and that was an access point, that has decreased. Um, when that time was happening, it was on camera of the residents that lived near that back.
What I meant was not, not one tw- one one option or the other in terms of like the front or the back, I I mean, in terms of like. Front gate, did they prefer option one, full replacement, option two, renovation, or option three, no changes, like which one?
No, when this went out, it was not my intention to lobby towards one or the other.
Did they indicate?
There there's different ones, yes, there's a few that uh probably could pay for the whole damn thing if they wanted to. But um, the idea is, hey, let's find out the answers to our questions, what's it cost? Because as a kid who played with tonka trucks when I was nine and eight years old, I have no clue, I can't answer those questions. They're just asking right now, what are the costs? Let us know and.
JP, you have to add?
Yeah, I just wanna provide clarity on something, one of the um parts of this. Um, the signatures that they they received was the back gate. Um, that back gate is not owned by the special taxing district, that back gate is actually owned by the HOA themselves. So, that would not come through special taxing districts dollars, that would be separate.
Okay, um, anything further on this item before we move on, because again, I wanna try to get us out of here at a decent time. Thank you, Pat. Uh, okay, so with that, the automatic gate arms, what do you have to report to uh to everybody on that?
That was a a topic of conversation with um councilman Hershberg today. About uh something that we've talked about in pre- previous HOA meetings as well, when the guard goes to the bathroom or is taking. Um, you know, taking uh reports, which requires them to leave the gate arm open. Um, we do have, we can go ahead and and make it possible where they could flip a switch and the gate would stay down. So it'd become an automatic gate. Um, so just wanted to, based on our conversation today, wanted to uh add it to, see if that was, if there was more discussion on the floor from you all.
Uh, my question would be, how much, you should come back to us, how much that would cost to make that switch, I don't know if it would cost that much, we're not changing the gate, we're just. Right, I mean, how?
I had a quote for it, wow, that sounded loud, um, I had a quote for it uh last year. Um, that it was, it was about approximately a thousand six hundred or something like that. So I could get an updated quote uh from our vendor, I believe it's actually in the contract as well, the the. The pricing, so I'd have to go back and look at it, but.
Just, just so you guys understand what it is, is when the gate guard is not there. Or bathroom doing something, the gate just stays open, so it just looks like there's nobody there at all. That doesn't make any sense since how easy it would be to just to make it that, the gate, the guard is still not opening the gate, but obviously the gate can tell if there's a car there or not. So, it makes sense, I think, just come back with some quotes so we can decide if that's something we wanna add to the budget, because that would have to be added.
Yeah, and and a lot of these uh issues are budgetary related, so it'd be a decision that you would have, the uh. Many of them would be capital improvements, so.
I I mean, so that's the other thing, keep in mind, what what's a capital improvement, what's not, to me, I don't think making the gate a little bit more.
So that's why I added capital improvement procedures as part of this, for you all to discuss.
Okay, um, it's speed humps, what do you have for us on that?
Uh, speed humps were discussed as part of um. Uh, to see the uh, if this was something that was um. The council would be interested in adding to the exit lanes. Uh, specifically, the two locations would be Miami Lake Section One, as well as uh Seventy Ninth Avenue uh for Royal Oaks East. Um, but adding a um speed hump to slow the 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 vehicles as they go, um, those are the two. Gates that we've seen the most uh vehicles like ram- ramming into them, so. Just a topic, point of topic, we do have speed humps in in Miami Lake Section One and in the entry gate. And we've seen uh because of the speed humps, there's been less incidence of vehicles ramming into the gate there, so. Um, yeah.
Okay, and um, if, unless, does anybody have anything on that particular point? Okay, then uh ways to improve communication.
Uh, one thing uh that I wanted to uh mention as as far as ways uh to improve communication, that is a uh. That's been a very big topic of conversation in today's meeting, um, additional mailouts as we had discussed. Um, one thing that I uh had mentioned uh to councilmember Hershberg earlier today is. Uh, possibly adding a uh monitors, weatherproof monitors to the guardhouses. I have a qu- uh quote for the cost of the um, the monitors, uh they're uh. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's about four hundred dollars per monitor, they're about, you know, this big, you could put it on the guardhouse. And it, with our systems that we have here in Town Hall, that we utilize, that that provides um. Regular notify notices, uh, you're able to change the um, the communication on that um screen. Uh, it would allow, for example, myself to be able to provide information to the guard, the the residents from my desk. So, instead of, like you were talking about A-frames, for example, I would be able to uh. Change the screen to say, gate, gate, guardhouse will be closed uh on Seventy Ninth Avenue. On this date, and so it'll automatically change the screen, so that'll give people notice, another thing that you could add to it that we discussed, if the guard goes to the bathroom. They, with a click of a button, they could press it and it'll say, guard how, guard is in the bathroom, you could even add maybe a timer to it. So that they know how long the guard has been in the bathroom, if you wanted to, but it it's a way of providing. Information to them regularly and something that I could, I can control directly from my uh, my my screen. So, just wanted to present that as as an option, uh, the other things that we've kind of talked about is. Um, email blasts, if there's any way that we could get. Um, more emails from the residents or getting phone numbers for text messages. To just improve communication where we don't have to send out mailouts for things, so just wanted to present that to you all. I could just run through some of this stuff, boundary gates. Um, um, s- very, there's multiple boundary gates, especially on the Royal Oaks uh side. Um, that the um, the sidewalks are open, so we have seen that, uh, you know, at night. Somebody, uh, a group of people will go and park their car by the that boundary gate on the outside of the community. They'll walk in to the neighborhood and then they'll steal a car and drive out through the, through the um, the guardhouse. And so.
They're parking on Eighty Second Avenue and then walking in.
As an example, I'm I'm the one I'm I'm uh thinking of right now is the one on a hundred and fifty third. And uh, and Eighty Third Place. Eighty Third Court, is it place? You know where I'm talking about, yeah, eighty, Eighty Third Place, um, there's a a boundary gate uh that is open. Uh, the sidewalks are open, there's no um, there's no homes that face that gate. So they'll park their car in there, a group of people will get out, they'll walk into the, into the neighborhood. And they have clear access to go and find a car, they find a car, they steal a car. And they drive straight out through the 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 guardhouse, um, it's happened on multiple occasions. Um, and so, I bring it to. Four times. And so, I bring it to your attention because, you know, one of the options we could do is close. The sidewalk in general, um, another thing that I, we've talked about with, discussed with SFM is adding cameras there. Although that would be uh more difficult to to do because you'd have to electricity, things like that. Um, um, internet so that the cameras can be picked up, but if you did that, you you would have the ability to. Um, to have the guard monitor the cameras from the guardhouse, um, so just uh wanted to bring that to your attention.
You said Eighty Third Place on what?
Hundred and fifty third?
Is that, is that the the separation between Royal Oaks and Gramercy Park?
No, there's a, there's a. So there's Gramercy, I'm sorry, there is. There's a private community, I can't remember the private community, then there's this, this uh public neighborhood. Then Gramercy Park, that public neighborhood is tied, it's where the boundary gate for Royal Oaks is.
Okay. Okay.
So.
I hate the idea of closing a sidewalk for the record.
Yeah, so the ordinance requires the sidewalk to be open, so we'd have to change the ordinance first, that's the first thing, which we can do. Um, obviously, the security camera part would be costly potentially, so. Uh, and also, I I just wanna comment on the screens, I'm, the screens, buying the screens is literally cheaper than doing one mailout. Okay, so we can either continue to send postcards and spend seven hundred, eight hundred, a thousand dollars every time we send postcards. Or we can spend a one time and buy a screen, maybe even a little bigger screen.
About the size, because you you did this.
Yeah.
And e- even at thirty four years old, this is kind of small for me.
Um, I. It 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 would allow me to to control it from my my desk and and be able to, whatever notifications need to be mentioned. You know, it would be cheaper, it would, yeah, from my office, uh, it would be cheaper, uh, as you mentioned, there is a cost for the. Um, for the fee for the program, but we already pay for it.
Yeah.
We already pay for it for for Town Hall.
It's, it's a no brainer cost savings, because if we have screens where we need it to be, residents can say, see it, we don't have to do the mailouts anymore. It's a no brainer, and we can also use it for other notices.
And and by the way, it's it's thirteen dollars or something like that.
Oh, yeah, but what he said is, I, I don't know what the screen size you're looking at, but we would want, from my perspective at least, if we went forward with this. We would get rid of the notification budget and just use the screens to notify residents. So you, uh, when you come back to us, a screen big enough that the average person can easily read it. And if you need to, because this is something else you discussed, is you might wanna have one screen on the gate guard and on the residence lane, a screen by the residence lane, so if that costs some money.
Yeah, so.
Over, over just a few years, it's clearly a cost saver.
So the, so the way I I I look at it is, taking Miami Lake Section One for example, Miami Lake Section One has two residential lanes. But they have two areas in the middle that you could put a a pole and put a a a screen that would be connected to the guardhouse. So, um, over time, it would be a cost savings, like you said.
The vice mayor, I mean, it could be a cost saver in in a year, so I I think there's some momentum to see that. So if you can give us some solid quotes, so we can move forward on that.
Now, so, there's no dis- there's no um, decisions being made today, so. Is, I I'm presenting this at the next council meeting?
If you can, sure, why not, I mean, you gotta present it with a budget, right? Because we would have to then move a line item budget to say, okay, instead of mailers, we're gonna spend the same amounts of money or even less on buying these screens and then. And setting them up, uh, so that that's, I think there's uh, there's room there to get these done and then no longer have the mailers.
And then I'll ask you, um, what type of, what size screen would you like to see? There's different, what type, what size screen would you like to see, there's.
Visible preferably.
Yeah, I mean, look, th- those are all details that we can work out, you know, just for the benefit of the public, the workshops are for us to get information, for uh, for you to get information. Um, and for us to, you know, be able to give direction without make, taking a decision, right? Where, uh, with workshops, they're, you know, even though they're a sunshine meeting, they're not meetings where we take votes, so. Um, so yeah, if you feel JP that you're prepared to present it in May at the regular council meeting, by all means. Um, you know, bring it back then, I think uh we all kind of agree that if it's a cost saving to the residents, it's something we're prepared to do. Um, so with that, I know we kind of already touched on it, but why don't you just give us a recap of the increase to the security guard services? Maybe address anything else that you, that we haven't haven't already previously covered, and after that, we're done.
So, the meeting that, the the budget that Melissa presented to you all. Does not include the request from SFM Security Services to increase the hourly rate. So, the budgets would change if you approved the hour, the uh request that they made.
So they're presenting a change order, in essence.
They're requesting a change order to increase the current uh bill rate of, for level one guards from twenty one forty. To twenty two seventy five, which would be an increase of six percent. Or for a security uh guard level two from twenty three forty three to twenty four thirteen, which would be a two point nine percent increase. This is based off Miami Lake Section One's contract, which Lock Loman is already on. And uh Royal Oaks will will be on starting October first.
Understood, any questions for JP before we close out? Alright, seeing none, we are adjourned at eight forty three PM, thank you everybody and thi- uh, including those watching at home, thank you.